Okay, it's six o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order. And if we could rise to say the pledge, that'd be great.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for coming, everybody. We'll start with the approval of the agenda. Any additions or changes? Dan?
I have none.
Dwayne?
I have none.
No? Ryan? Nope. Okay, I've got a couple here. We're gonna add A2, resolution accepting a donation to the city of Casson.
You've got that donation letter in front of you on the desk there.
Yep. And well, we'll do that after we approve the agenda here.
Sure.
Add H1, fire truck discussion. H2, fire department air packs. And add K1, letter of resignation from firefighter Ferguson from the fire department. So with those four adds, our entertaining a motion to approve the agenda has changed.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Ryan. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda. We did add the resolution accepting a donation, which is for the WPA 1938 walls and pillars, whereas the Casson Alliance for Restoration Care has made a donation to the city of Casson the amount of $10,660.70 to be allocated for lawful purposes to the WPA 1938 walls and pillars. And we're gonna add that to consent agenda to accept that. So we thank them for that donation to go toward the project. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda?
I'm moved to approve with that addition.
Thanks, Dwayne. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public forum, I've got one person tonight, Tim. Wanna come up and state your name and address, that'd be great.
19 North Manorville Avenue. On a lighter note, I got my sump pump inspection done this afternoon, so.
All right, thank you.
I feel a big weight off my shoulders.
Relief.
This just came up this afternoon. The family from the head-on crash, actually two of them, came in this afternoon and wanted me to thank fire rescue and the Dodge Center ambulance and Casson PD and the other first responders who saved their life. One was a family of the block family, which I think he was the most seriously injured, but he walked in this afternoon, so. All pretty rough shape, but those who are out there know how bad that could've been or was, but so far, everybody's living. So they just wanted me to give these guys a virtual hug. They wanted to give them a hug in person. I told them I'd pass it on tonight since there's a meeting, so, well done.
Thanks, Tim. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Onto committee report. Number one is gonna be the Pennington conditional use permit to put a fence on a property line. That's F1 in your packet.
Sure, and I think, is Brad on?
Brad, you're there on two?
He shows up there, but.
He's muted.
Anyways, suffice to say, you've got this in your packet. Planning Commission reviewed this last week, and it seemed to be relatively straightforward. We have residents who are requesting this conditional use permit. You've got the report in your packet, details. This is going to join a city trail, kind of just north of the church there over by the Marty subdivision, if you're familiar with that area. I think, you know, staff felt that it's kind of a positive for both the city and for the property owners. It can provide some privacy for them as well as allow for us to kind of to be able to make sure that folks are staying on the trail. And eventually, we anticipate lights along the trail there too, so that'll be a positive as well. So I don't think there was a lot of questions really on that from the planning commission, but the commissioners are here if they have any points to make.
Yeah, the only outstanding condition was that they were to get an agreement with the property owner and get it filed with the county to put the west fence on the property line. So to get that easement agreement, as of the planning commission meeting, that wasn't done. I don't know if it's been done.
Do we have a staff to turn that and see attorney?
We have forwarded the agreement, worked it, put it together for them. So long as they don't have any questions about it, they have the document, they can sign it.
Mary's here tonight, too, if you need.
Mary, did you wanna step up and address this at all, or it's up to you if you want to?
Hi, Mary Pennington, property owner at 901 Fifth Avenue Northwest. We did get that document today, and we'll go ahead and get that signed and then have our neighbors sign it as well, and then file it with the county, correct? Okay. So that's the plan.
Perfect. So you got it. Good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Staff satisfies that. Dwayne, correct? Yep. Any other comments from planning and zoning or questions?
Something.
Okay. Thanks for putting the work in on that. I entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
Make that motion.
Thanks, Ryan. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Dan. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution passes. Number two, horsemen variance to rebuild in the setback.
So, and I just saw Brad today, so I know he's there. But you have this staff report as well. There were a few more questions about this application. This is to rebuild a garage in a property and to waive the side setback. Not entirely, but generally waive it so that it could be rebuilt on the same location that it was originally placed. The planning commission had a number of questions. Staff did recommend that a survey be done as part of this. However, the planning commission, you can see in your packet, did approve it on a three to two to one vote. There was one member who had to abstain because of a conflict or potential conflict without that survey. I don't know, Brad, if you wanna chime in on this one, if you can hear me, but otherwise, I can address it some more. I don't know if he's gonna make it. Anyways, I guess the biggest concern that the staff had was that if this property were to turn over and this, you know, actually is not being built on the neighbor's, you know, on the correct property, if the, for example, if it exceeds the property line and a new neighbor moves in, not always knowing that there's a amicable relationship, that can cause an issue. And we are concerned in a more historic area of Casson that the plat would be, it might not be accurate. And certainly, I think the residents are here and we invite them to come up and address it. So that was our concern, is to try and make sure that we're protecting the residents from a larger issue in the future. But, you know, the planning commission felt that it wasn't necessary, so. I don't know, Dwayne or Dan, if you wanted to address it at all? Or Chris, like, as we've got the residents and the public, too?
Yeah. The biggest concern is, like staff said, what happens down the road? And then we find out it is on the neighbor's property. There is markers there according to the property owner, but are they accurate? We don't know. That's why the city was looking at that. Because we did have the option, too. We, planning and zoning did ask if they could move the garage farther back and then move it in, you know. There was room for that, so.
Dwayne?
Well, I had a descending opinion on it, and it's only because this is part of the original plat for the city. And the existing or the past garage had been sitting there for greater than 40 years based on comments that were made. And since we had just recently approved rebuilding on the current cement structure, I felt inclined to approve this without the survey. I did ask for, you know, location of the pins, just so we had a general idea, but Tim convinced me otherwise that's probably not a good idea, so.
Well, I mean, what Dwayne's referring to is having city staff try to locate the pins. And, you know, my feeling on that is that it's just not, we're not surveyors. And I don't, I mean, certainly, we're trying to protect the property owner, we're also not saying that, I mean, I don't want one of the public works staff to go, well, it's my fault if we have the wrong location.
Yep.
So that was, I think, what you're.
Yep, that's exactly right.
Okay, Brad.
Yep. How did you have a question?
When was the last time the property sold? And was a survey done at that time?
That's a good question. I don't know. Do you, sir, do you remember when the property was last sold? Or, I mean, that's a question from one of the council members.
The property we live on? We bought it from my parents thirty.
Five years ago.
Five years ago, twenty-six years ago.
Oh, longer than that?
Yeah.
Thirty-seven.
And the question that I had was, do you recall if a survey was done at the time that you bought it?
There's been times, that's been surveyed several different times. And we were able to locate all the property pins from all five lots that my parents owned, including mine. And we stringlined all the property lines, did the measurements, and show exactly the depth and the width of the lots. And the stringline on my west property line, the garage is not on the neighbor's property.
History of the survey here.
Better than no survey, never.
Brad, did you wanna chime in?
I can't. I didn't really hear a whole lot. The question that you're talking about now is whether we need a survey. Is that what I understand?
That's right.
Right. So all I will say is this, you know, we, most cities require a survey to issue a building permit. Sometimes cities will not require a survey if they're very sure that there are no encroachments. In this case, we're issuing a variance for a setback, and we're relying on aerial photo that we're not 100% sure about where exactly that setback is and where exactly that line is. We're issuing a variance to the zoning code, and therefore, our recommendation from a staff standpoint, and this would be our recommendation regardless of what city we're working in, is that you get a survey to verify where that building is going to be placed. And a professional licensed by the state of Minnesota surveyor is what we're gonna rely on. And that's my recommendation. Now, if you have another way of being able to demonstrate that you're 100% sure where that property line is, I know a lot of people talk about, well, I know where the stakes are. I'm not a surveyor. Brandon has someone from the engineering department who is a surveyor. I know he has surveyors in his office who can speak to whether or not there are legitimate stakes, and that's what's there. All I'm suggesting is with the survey, we have then valid, certified verification that the building is being placed on the property and the setback is two feet, two feet, six inches, three feet, whatever it may be. Right now, we're relying on what I would determine is not reliable data to issue a variance. So our recommendation would be that the survey be done. I know it's a, you know, a $2,000 to $3,000 expense and it delays the project, but that's the best practice here. If you do move forward without a survey, I would recommend that we at least get a plat drawing or some kind of drawing that shows where that property is being built, that shows the dimension of where that setback is, and that we have some, somebody, the building inspector would probably be the right person to do it, who issues the building permit, verify on site that the building is in fact on property. If it is encroaching on the neighbor's property, then that's a separate issue that the city shouldn't be involved in. That's an encroachment issue between the two neighbors, but I would seek legal advice on whether we should be issuing a variance when the issue is an encroachment, not a variance.
Thanks, Brad.
Questions on that?
Does anybody have any other questions for Brad? All right, thanks, Brad. So I guess it's up to you as the council, you know, how you wanna proceed. You know, certainly, you've got the information in front of you, so.
So there's been surveys done in the past. Do you have any records of those surveys at all?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Like I said, we were able to find the property pin, I mean, and we measured it. And I know they mentioned last time, well, a property pin could be moved, but we found property pins for several of the lots there. And they're there, and we pulled off them, the measurements of the lots, the lots are 60 six feet wide, and I had to do my hair from the back. I don't know why you should have to pay to re-survey something that's there.
An old survey, you know, could be sufficient. I would leave it to the building inspector to verify that, but, you know, we have, in certain circumstances, you know, allowed a pre-existing survey to be used as long as we know nothing has significantly changed.
Thanks, Brad. Any question, anything on Ryan at all?
Is there a way to get that information? Is there a way to find that information anywhere? Do you have any way of any documentation of that survey?
No. Anything?
My only question is, what potential liability does this open us up to down the road?
Well, I tend to agree with staff's recommendation and with Brad that a survey should be required. If you recall, there was a similar lawsuit that we just got through last year.
Yeah.
For, you know, allegedly approving something that we ultimately missed.
Would any of those surveys be recorded with the county?
Possibly.
You know, with the current home deed or whatever?
Possibly, or the other. The other thing, you could just call some of the local surveyors, call Massey, and see if they've got records from it. They might have, they might have some records of them.
Do they typically?
Or you could look at the county.
Do they typically keep? Yes?
Yeah, they would.
Okay.
They're surveyors, they keep everything.
I mean, if there was a way that, and I would assume the homeowners would have to do it, check with Massey or check with the county to see if there is a record of a prior survey.
I could look at the county level.
Okay.
The homeowners could certainly do that as well.
Okay.
But the surveyors would, I most likely wanna give information directly to the property owner.
Right.
About their files related to that property.
I just, I agree. It's got too many shades of similarity to the lawsuit that we were fortunately able to defend without expending taxpayer money as it happened in the end. But circumstances like that are certainly exceptional. Usually, the city is on the line for defending itself regardless of guilt or innocence. So that would be my concern.
But the lawsuit wasn't exactly about, we offered to let them put language in that to rebuild if it ever burned down in the same footprint. So it's not exactly the same.
But the.
To me, it's just it's been there for how long and put it back on the same foundation. I don't know. It's kinda, I don't know where you're coming from.
Okay, so then, the same question from a different perspective. When is the last time that the adjoining property at issue sold? And was there a survey done on that property? Could we back into this in a way to try to find a survey?
That adjoining to the property in the west.
Right.
You know, when the neighbors bought that one, then? Or no?
About four years ago, probably.
Well, that might be more recent.
That's a good place to start, then.
And that owner built the privacy fence, so you figure he got it surveyed.
Well, I mean, I guess one thing we could do is, you know, we don't absolutely need to have approval tonight if there are things that we wanna try and save the expense for the residents, but also, if we can investigate that aspect, if they did a survey, if it was that recent, they may have something that's more easy to find. I mean, I guess that's up to the council's pride of what you'd like them to do, if you'd like to take action tonight, or if we wanna do further investigations on this.
Well, I've got one additional question I wanna ask, and that is, with the survey, the requirement of the survey, we are establishing a new practice that any time that there's gonna be new construction on an existing parcel, we're gonna require a survey.
I would say that what we're saying here is that if a conditional use permit or variance is required, that would be accurate. If this were not requiring that, I don't think that would be necessary. If that, just so that's clear. I think that's really the sticking point for me, is the, I mean, you're granting them a special waiver of responsibility, basically.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
And in addition to that, I would add that we're granting a variance based on a specific setback calculation. It's not an open-ended variance, and we don't know what that specific calculation is because we have no reference point. And so it's difficult to set what that variance is, and then we end up with this kind of a very vague, open-ended variance, and that variance is there for eternity. So we wanna be specific, and we need to have that reference point. So if you had a, if you had, you know, an older drawing, or, you know, I'm looking at the plat right now on the county website. This plat is so old that it's hand-drawn, and it's very difficult. So that's further reason why a survey would be a beneficial thing to have in this particular case. But to Tim's point, Dwayne, we are, you're in a situation where we really need a specific calculation. If it wasn't a variance situation, or if there was very clear that it met all setback requirements, it wouldn't be as critical.
And, excuse me, and I don't disagree with those comments. I just want a matter of record. That's what we're establishing, so. And to your point, Chris, I am open to whatever we can to try to minimize the potential financial burden to the property owners on this, and if we can find archived data somewhere, I'm all for it.
Me, too. I mean, at the end of the day, if we can't find it, this stuff always comes back to the city and we get sued somehow. And it costs all the taxpayers, like we saw last time, potentially too much money. So if we can find a way to find some kind of records, drawings, survey, anything that we can find historical so we can avoid, help them avoid the expense, I think that'd be in the best interest of everybody. And it would establish the criteria that we need for the variance. Because even though we could say, okay, it's fine today, it's gonna come back and bite some council in the future, and they're gonna spend taxpayer dollar then, so. So can we just table this then, as far as no decision, and see what we can come up with before the next meeting and?
Yeah, I mean, that's a good idea. If that property's sold more recently, I mean, that's something we can try to have, work with them to check into at the county level and.
Does the neighbor of the west have an issue with the garage going back up? So that, okay. So this is just the variance that we're talking about?
If you would've came here tonight and.
We didn't think we needed.
Gotcha. No, you don't, and you don't. It's more of the variance part of it, it's not a dispute then. Okay. So I think.
Am I allowed to say something? Like, I don't know, I've never been to one of these.
Really quick, what you got?
Well, so, the main, the biggest concern is you guys getting sued by somebody who might buy the house to the west.
By somebody in the future.
Right. So if the house is sold, like, six times since I've been part of their family, with the garage there, and like, we're not moving it, so what, I don't get, since it burned down, it's like.
If in the future it's determined that it's either closer than two and a half feet to the property line, or worse yet, over the property line.
Yep.
It would be then that someone would be looking to sue somebody for compensation, and they could sue the city and say, you approved this building permit, they'll let this neighbor build on my property. I'm gonna sue you for it. That's the concern.
So who would they try to sue if his garage didn't burn down? And somebody bought that house to the west, realized that garage was on their property?
It's a property dispute between two neighbors, because we wouldn't have issued a variance for it to be there. Because we would be issuing the variance for it to be there, then we're saying, hey, it's okay to put it there, and if somebody else got, we have this problem with fences between property owners who had handshake agreements.
When it's that old, it doesn't matter.
What's that?
When it's that old, you're saying.
Exactly. So, 'cause it was never really, it's just a mess in that part of town, so.
It's a pre-existing, non-conforming structure today.
Correct.
Legal, legal, non-conforming structure.
Let's figure out a way to get all the information we can so we can help avoid the cost of doing that, so. If we can check the county with wherever you can find, and we'll move on from there. So we'll table this till the next meeting. Okay. Thank you, guys, for coming. If you can find something, give Massey a call, anything you can find, any kind of records, drawings, surveys, anything, neighbor's surveys, anything they've got would be awesome. Okay? Let's move on to GO business, 2021 tax levy collectible in 2022. Staff redid that for us.
Yeah, based on the feedback we received at the last council meeting, we took, you know, council's comments, and I believe you should, I mean, I think I sent that out to you, just to kind of show where we're adding some of that fund balance back in, so we have a little more flexibility that was requested from the council. And some of those budgets may change a little bit more. The general fund budget will be the one that'll change. Typically, the library line item is pretty well set, the EDA line item is pretty well set, and then Nancy's got our debt levy pretty well set as well, so it's that general line item that would change, so. And if there's any questions for Nancy or myself, please feel free, 'cause we're certainly glad to answer those.
And the percentage on that?
Yes, and it's a two-part. If you could please approve the resolution and then also approve the budget.
Sure.
Or just to be specific.
The percentage is, what, 9.38?
Yes.
I believe that's the percentage, Chris.
Okay. Okay, so I entertain a motion to approve the preliminary tax levy at 9.38%.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Ryan. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So that's the cap. It can't be any higher than that. We can go down from there to our meeting in December.
And I think Nancy's also looking for, you're looking for approval of the budget as well, or?
Yeah, if that was approving the resolution, then to also approve a preliminary budget.
Okay.
I'll make that motion to approve the preliminary budget.
Thanks, Dwayne. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Mel. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
That's your need. All right. Thanks, Nancy. Thanks for putting that together. New business, H1, fire truck.
So included in your packet, you've got a couple of items, and I also emailed those out to you. They were, they weren't in the packet originally, but there are a couple of different numbers that the EMS committee has taken a look at already, and they reviewed those, and we've got the chief and assistant chief to kind of present those.
Packet chief.
Looking at two truck options, and then also the acquisition of some new air packs, and those are typically done every, you know, 10 to 15 years, as long as the life cycle is, so. I don't know, Joe, if you wanna go ahead and address these concerns?
Yeah, so, just, kinda wanna, I realize Chris added two different items, but I kinda wanna talk about both the air packs and the trucks altogether. You all should have the comparison sheet for the trucks between the Rosenbauer and the Pierce. If you look at those, those numbers, the, right in the middle of the sheet, the big bold numbers, those are the numbers for both of those trucks. The Rosenbauer was 681, the Pierce was 669. That was with basically everything that we, you know, that we wanted in those trucks, and then all of the discounts with the prepays and those kinds of things to get as much of a discount as we could. Then you'll see a list of items below that number, and then a final number on the bottom. The Rosenbauer there, 642, and then the Pierce at 632. Those are getting us down to our 650,000 budget number that Tim and Nancy and the council had kind of approved with the equipment certificate that we were looking at getting. That was the, that was kind of the goal, was to get us under that 650. So we've taken a few items out of there. The reason I wanna talk about these numbers together, the air pack number that you have as well, we had estimated that right around the 200,000 number. We've got a bid for right around 168. And ultimately, after answering questions and things like that, we'd like to steal from one to add some stuff to the other, to keep us under the total number of 850 for that equipment certificate, but ultimately, that is gonna come down to your guys' decision. But, yeah, I will answer questions, or I can go through anything else, and CJ's here to answer everything that I can. here to answer everything that I can.
So you're saying you want to, for say, borrow from one to the other, like you're saying, what do you want to add to the fire truck?
So we'd like, as you can see there, um, our recommendation to the, to the council, regardless of, of whether we add items back in or not, is to go with the Rosenbauer. Right now, the, the last truck that we purchased was that ladder, was a Rosenbauer. This engine will be set up identical to that, to that truck. Moving forward, years down the road, it's going to be our, our main truck, our main engine out, and our, our guys are going to be using it the most. We need those two trucks to be, to be set up similar, so. It's got a little bit bigger cab, we can get an extra guy in there. And ultimately, that was, that was kind of the decision that, that CJ and I and our equipment group came up with, so. The items that we would like to add back in there, if possible, one would be that light tower. We would like to add the, the air pack seat in the officer, so the, the front right seat currently doesn't have an air, it's just a regular seat, doesn't have a spot for an air pack. What we've found over the years is when you can write FEMA grants and things like that for, for air packs, you, you get money based on the number of seats that you have, so that's kind of why we want to, we want to add that, add that in. And at six hundred dollars, that's, that's not a huge, not a huge add-on. Yeah, the, the main thing is, is to get that light tower back on there. We would like to add the, the deck gun back in there as well, which is sixty-one hundred. I know one of the biggest questions that you'll see is, on the Pierce side, that light tower is fifteen thousand, and the deck gun was twenty-four, twenty-five. Those are differences between like Ford and Chevy. The one, it's a little bit better, it's a little bit bigger, light tower, a lot more lumens. I didn't bring any details for you guys tonight on, on, on that kind of stuff. But yeah, at, at the end of the day, we can work without the light tower, but it's a, it's a, it's a big deal for us. It would, it lights the world up, so for us, from a, from an emergency standpoint, working at night, it's a, it's a big benefit for us, so. But adding those, adding those two items in, puts us, let's see, puts us right around six seventy, and with that, still keeps us under the eight fifty. I think the total ends up to be right around like eight forty-five for adding those numbers in for the truck and then the, the air packs. The air packs is twenty-five packs, thirty new face pieces for the members of the department. That's fifty bottles, so we'll have two bottles for every pack. That gets us a rip pack, a rip bottle for our emergencies, if a guy goes down and we got to go in with an air pack, gets extra air, plus it gives us a maintenance program. So, access to online, you know, online tracking and, and all that kind of stuff. If we have an air pack, go down on a call or a training, we can just jump online, you know, enter that info in, and it goes right directly to our maintenance guys and takes a lot of, a lot of pressure off making sure we get ahold of somebody and, and we get stuff fixed right away.
Comments, questions? Just EMS committee members over here.
You mentioned too that Rosenbauer had better storage, better height of storage, correct? Not the one you mentioned?
Yeah, it's, it's, um, storage is comfortable. It's, the, the Rosenbauer ultimately has better storage that's lower to the ground, so. The, the Pierce has got bigger coffins that sit along the, the top of the, the top of the engine, which we can't, I mean, you have to get on top of the truck to access it, where with the Pierce, everything is basically accessible from the ground.
And this does have the radio headset?
We would, that's all coming out.
That is coming out of this one?
Yes, yep, yep. Yeah, we, when we looked into that, the, the safe cabs are below the decimal level that you would need your protection, so that's why we decided to take those out.
So the original budgeted amount for the two items, and budgeted is the wrong word, Nancy, I'm sorry, I don't know the correct terminology, but the original amount that we planned for these two items was?
Eight fifty.
So combining the two, you're coming in at sort of eight forty-six-ish?
Yeah, yep.
Bad math?
Round up, yep.
And it, does it look like approximately seven months for completion?
No, it'll be close, it'll be over here for the truck. Air packs is two to three months.
Do you have room near your facility now for another vehicle?
What's coming out?
Engine two would come out.
And that's the one that's?
That's the one we're.
End of us.
Yep, that's the one we're replacing, so. I mean, there would be, I mean, we would look to sell that, but at this point, I mean, we're, we're not.
Maybe twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Still not peanuts.
Yeah, so I mean, some of that, I mean, some of that we would recoup, but it's, you got to find a market for a thirty-year-old truck, so.
So Joe, forgive my ignorance, but the manual deck gun, the difference in pricing, is that a difference in size and delivery of water and things like that?
It's going from an electronic raise and turn and control it to a manually after raise and manually after turn.
So instead of somebody having to stand there and crank it up, that's the, that's the biggest difference.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Anything else? Anybody's got phones, good to me. Thanks for staying under the allocated amount. I'll take a motion.
Make a motion to approve the purchase of the fire truck, the Rosenbauer and the air packs.
With the additional light tower, deck gun, officer seat.
Light tower, deck, uh, deck gun and officer seat.
Okay, have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Mel, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. And just for information, this is all in our budget that we just approved, so it's part of the certificate of the capital improvement program, so.
Just to speak to that a little bit, talking with Nancy about it, there's some fund balance that'll be transferred over in, that we already have, see, that we'll be covering, helping to lower the, the debt service in the first few years, and then Nancy's indicated there's some savings as a debt issuance comes off in 2025, correct Nancy? That we may be utilizing some of those funds to help cover the, the cost back forward, so.
Yep, okay. Thank you. Administrator's report, anything to add, Tim?
Uh, I, I don't have a, it's a little different this time because I kind of wrote up my conference. I appreciate the opportunity to attend that conference, and my goal is when I do those trainings, I like to try and bring that back to you and share kind of what we talked about. It was really good to touch base with some colleagues and hear what they're going through and a lot of the similar issues that we, we face in terms of land use and police interactions and different things. But other than that, it's been, we've got a busy month transitioning from the summer season to fall, starting to winterize. Park and Rec had a very good meeting last night, talked about a lot of issues and a lot of things that are going to be coming to the fore here with some of our park planning and the plans for the aquatic center and that sort of thing next year. Same thing with planning and zoning, I think they've talked about a number of really important issues. One thing they addressed was the, the new solar project that's coming southeast of Cassin. It's a very large project, it's over eighteen hundred acres. And we've been informed that they're going to be putting a substation in southeast of town as well, so definitely some concerns from planning and zoning in terms of the growth restriction because of that on our southeast in County of Township. So something we're going to keep a definite eye on, and, and they have public comment later this year, which we probably will be trying to, I'll be addressing some comments to the PUC, the Public Utilities Commission, about it, because they kind of went over the county set, went over the head of everybody, and obviously we, the property owners have rights to their property and they get to do what they want, but it does and will impact our community as well. So other than that, I'll take any questions anyone has. Thank you.
On to the engineer's report.
Thank you, Marion Council. Three items tonight, the first one being joint resolution with Olmsted, or Scaris, Dodge County, just came out of Olmsted County, regarding some projects we've been working with them in the last couple of years, the Safeway School Project, the Fairground Water Tower and the Sixteenth Street Northwest Project. That'd be extension of Sixteenth Street from the proposed roundabout at that intersection over to the dump rotor Dodge County twenty-one. So in your council package, it's a joint resolution. We've met with, initially with county staff, kind of worked out some things. Tim and I went and met with the county at a county board meeting, they provided us some information or thoughts on what we were proposing. We've in turn incorporated that into this joint resolution and documents, and we've ultimately submitted that back to the county staff, and county staff is recommending this joint resolution and these easement documents to proceed to approval at the county board level. So we've got them here before you tonight to review them with you, make sure that there's no details that the, the city would like to tweak or have any issues with. So maybe I'll just go through the three projects. Again, at Sixteenth Street Northwest, in the North Service Street, that was part of the, the previous feasibility report and planning that we've done for that section roadway. It's a very important project for the city and municipal stadium. Money, we're going to utilize a lot of that here in the near future to extend that road. We've been in discussion with some potential development in the area, so we think it's something that we definitely need to keep pushing forward here. That's, there's some conditions in there and some design criteria things that don't necessarily concern me. I think it's working with the county because it is ultimately their land that we're going to acquire from them to build, so they just have some conditions in there. So we don't, I don't personally have any issue with that, I don't think staff does either. The second one, we're kind of using these all same together because there's some maybe advantage or disadvantage for each one, but we think, again, at the end of the day, kind of, these all kind of worked in everybody's kind of favor between the county and the citizens of Dodge County, and obviously the citizens of Cassin. The second one is the water tower. The Fairgrounds Water Tower is scheduled to be replaced next year. We're looking at replacing that tower a couple hundred feet to the north, ultimately on the county property there. So we are looking at acquiring an easement to build that tower. As part of the, that easement dedication to the city, we would be expanding a water line kind of to the racetrack area where their office is there, provide some fire protection for that, that area. The fairgrounds is really not protected by fire hydrants. In addition to that, provide a water service stub that they will in the future connect on to and meter their water. Their water's not currently metered. We've been, kind of been haunted by the DNR to take care of our unmetered water, so I think it's going to help that in that, that manner, so that's a big benefit to the city and the county. And then lastly there is an easement for a shared use path, part of the Safeway School Project, we did planning, ultimately kind of what we call the goat trail from the middle school by the horse riding arena through the fairgrounds out to Fifth Avenue. Kind of thought from, from that perspective was the kids use it, so let's pave it, so it's a better trail for everybody. So that is an easement to construct and maintain that trail, and that would also be constructed next year as part of our Safeway School Project. So that's the, the gist of the joint resolution. Again, for your consideration, I'd like to pass it or provide any staff direction, but I think I'm pretty comfortable and the staff at the county level are comfortable with it, and I won't go into the gory details of some of the documents, but staff and the attorneys put together those documents that it will accommodate this joint resolution, ultimately be executed if it's approved by both boards.
Brendan, I've got two questions. The first one, what is the North Service Street?
Since I call it backed road to the existing buildings to the northwest, north of the future extension of Sixteenth and west of fifty-seven, part of that redevelopment in there, development, we may be looking at a backed road, or we're in this case calling it North Service Street.
Okay.
Not only provide service to those current, current businesses, but any redevelopment, but also.
From the backside.
To the backside, and then also any development to the north. So it's more, let's secure the land, we'll work with on how that area to the north of those businesses and those businesses get potentially redeveloped, so.
Okay.
And that, that was all laid out in that report that we put together.
Okay. Second question, in, in regards to item number eight under the Sixteenth Street extension. And it may be just poorly worded, or I'm not understanding, but it talks about the boulevard width along the south side of Sixteenth Street shall be decreased to accommodate an additional buffer. That doesn't abut property of the county, so why are we narrowing, potentially narrowing our boulevard on the south side of a Sixteenth Street extension?
Uh, no, I would disagree with that. So that, that Sixteenth Street, that section of Sixteenth Street will be on the south side of the transfer station and the landfill there. So there's those power poles in there, between the power poles, we're going to be setting a trail, so the buffer in that area is going to be sliding the road and the trail to the south to give us a little more buffer in there. That land that was south of the landfill was intended for a buffer, so the town, the county was thinking if we're going to put a trail through there, they'd like to see some sort of buffer to kind of buffer the landfill there.
And I think what Duane's trying to say though, it's, it, the way this is written, it said it's going to decrease the boulevard on the south side.
Yes, if the boulevard on the south side is decreased, the road and the trailer are going to move to the south, therefore we're going to have a larger buffer on the north side.
Yep, but, so it's making the road narrower?
No, just letting the road out of the center of the right of way, sort of like an eighty-foot right of way.
When you think of boulevard, you're maybe thinking of street width.
Yep.
I think he's talking about the entire right of way, so instead of centering the road in the right of way, we're going to slide the road a little bit to the south, so the, the boulevard, like the median maybe what you're thinking of, like the grass and strip that's on the side of the road would be decreased in the south, increased on the north. So maybe, maybe boulevard is a confusing word in that case.
Correct, yep.
So that's something that we certainly can take into account, but I think that's what he's referring to, is.
And we're, we're actually going to need to do that to kind of work with those telephone poles that are along there, the transmission poles from Excel, so that's, it's going to kind of have to be done anyway, so that's not a, a big concern, and I, I know kind of what the county wants, and we've kind of already worked in that, that arrangement, so it's not, it's not something that we can't accommodate, so.
But our, our, standard boulevard is what, twelve feet, twenty feet?
Twenty feet.
Twenty feet?
Set back from the, yeah.
From the curb.
From the curb, right. Because you'd have, I mean, eighty-foot road, forty-foot width, and then twenty and twenty.
Yep, so we're going to decrease it from twenty down to, with a path.
This is going to be a little bit of a non-traditional road. This is going to be in an eighty-foot right of way, and I'd have to look back to see what the width of the road was. And then we're going to have a trail just on the north side with no sidewalk on the south side. So we're going to probably work within that eighty-foot right of way and move the road farther to the south. So it's going to be kind of an atypical roadway. And it's going to be all access controlled, so it's not going to have any houses or anything or driveways off it. It'll probably have two roadways, the North Service Street and then a road to the south, so it's a little bit of a unique, unique corridor. Somewhere like Sixteenth Street going to the east would be a little different than that, be more rural, it'll have curb and gutter, but a more rural feel to it, so it's just kind of an atypical road. So I don't know if I'd try to compare what's being described here of a traditional roadway and a traditional, you know, residential subdivision.
The thing about too is that western half of that property, Mr. Schu has got the eastern half, and the county owns the western half.
Correct.
So really, we're just adjusting where the road goes over their property. They've got the north and the south, and the south side's where that pond's going to go, the larger pond.
Yep, yep.
I mean, but I can see where that boulevard terminology would be confusing, so I don't know if we may want to revise that. I hope we understand what we're talking about, though.
Okay. Maybe to better describe on what the, the end product's going to be, going from the north, we have the landfill. There's their south property line, that landfill's pretty close to that south property line. And right along that, that property line is the Excel transmission lines, I need to work around and not grade around. And then we're going to leave a buffer, a few feet, I don't know that exact dimension off the top of my head, to plant this buffer prairie stuff within that kind of corridor. Then we're going to have a ten-foot trail, and then we're going to have probably what we all view as boulevard, from the trail to the back of a curb and gutter, and then build our collector's standard road. Then we have another curb and gutter, as we go to the south, and it'll be kind of open from there, and we'll have another boulevard that won't have another sidewalk, and that'll be some distance, so we'll work kind of those dimensions into that eighty-foot corridor, and that's what's being deeded over to the city.
And that's on the county property?
Yep.
Okay.
It'll be deeded over to the city and also be public right of way. So that's a corridor. And when the property to the east, that was referenced, Schu has developed, and that'll kind of be also an eighty-foot corridor and tie the roundabout to the county property.
Now I'm understanding, thank you.
Good question.
Anything else? Honored Tino motion to approve the joint agreement.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dan, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Duane, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number two.
All right, second item, water tower, we referenced, the water tower at the fairgrounds is going to be taken down, replaced with a larger water tower, so we have a request for council action just to get some clarity on the painting of that water tower. So when we replace the new water tower at the fairgrounds, it'll look very similar in size, it'll be slightly bigger than the, the CHS Tower, the railroad water tower, the West Water Tower, I'm not sure exactly what we call it, but it'll be similar to that. Council direction that, what I understood was we were going to paint it exactly the same. When I went with staff, it was more a design meeting, the question kind of came up, well, do we want to look at it, is the council interested in painting that tower any different than the CHS Tower? My kind of opinion is, it works, there's some advantages to kind of the way the bowl's painted with mold that can grow underneath, and that blue's been kind of anti-mold in that location. I think it looks nice, and obviously the two towers would match, so that's been the understanding of your direction at that point, but I almost wanted to make crystal clear, provide clear direction to, to staff that, kind of the possibilities are endless on these water towers. And we've seen some other cities be interested in putting more logos or potential school logos or any dates of establishment, et cetera, on these water towers, just want to make sure that, that was the direction moving forward, and obviously as complexity of painting goes up, cost goes up too, so.
I got an idea, I'm not going to share it.
I do remember when we painted the existing tower, I was on council at the time, and the reason for that two-tone was merely, one was the mold and actually the other was the bird droppings. And so with the different color, it helped protect and hide it.
You can't see the stuff on the top and you can't see the stuff on the bottom.
I mean, if it's working, my opinion would be to do it just like this, and we could do a custom thing, but it's just going to add more cost to it and buy, pay for it.
We've seen $50,000 artworks, and there's canisters out from the paint companies that show these water towers, I mean, really cool water towers, but I just don't know that we have a logo that would be conducive of it, so.
I think, like Chris says, for feasibility tax and taxpayer money, let's do it right, but let's not do the?
Keep it simple.
Yes.
We don't need another custom water tower in town, yeah.
Do you guys ever get on, hit that bottom of that to spray it down?
We've never been asked.
Sounds like they just been asked. They just sound like you're asked.
Yeah, Monday night training. Scale the tower.
Training.
Unintended consequences. All right, so is that pretty much general direction from the council?
Yes.
Keep the budget, I mean, the water tower's going to cost whatever it is.
And the noise, you want to see engineers go, because the costs are going up, seal costs are higher than the original proposals. We are looking at different options for the size of the final product as well, and that's something that we'll certainly bring to council and make you aware of when we get ready to post a bidding, so.
Just the standard paint job, though. I agree, I'll go with that.
Thanks Brendan.
Yeah, thank you. Final item tonight, we do have a public open house next Thursday, 30th at 6:00 PM. We did move that to public forum as opposed to city hall here, just so we can have some more room if needed with the COVID situation. I do in the council packet have some background information, wanted to provide that, just because that ultimately is the basis of the recommendations that WHKS and MINDOT brought forward to the council at a previous meeting to ultimately solicit or have the discussion on what the recommendation was moving forward. Those two documents are the ICE report, that is an engineering report based on the proposed intersection, so these intersections and the proposal in the ICE report has been obviously reviewed and done from an engineering standpoint and reviewed from MINDOT, they've ultimately accepted this ICE report, and then the best practice for bike competitive safety, cut out kind of the roundabout section, I did have a link for the whole document to show some of the safety benefits that were used ultimately, again, come up the basis of the recommendations, and then ultimately the council basing those recommendations on moving forward with the roundabout portion of the project. So wanted to, we're going to get into some of this stuff, and we'll, you know, talk about every item that has been thrown out there, if you will. A lot of the comments that have been brought up aren't necessarily supporting these engineering documents, so we're going to address those and talk about engineering side of some of those comments, so didn't want to get into that tonight because again, we got a public open house next Thursday, the 30th, but wanted to get that in the council's packet to review the level of detail, these things aren't just thrown out there, we're just not making these decisions willy-nilly, there's thousands of hours of review that has gone in between our staff, MINDOT staff, to come up with these decisions and recommendations, so.
I just, one question before the next meeting. These roundabouts, they were designed by a traffic engineer, right?
Yeah, so, so once we got into the roundabout design, after we brought forward the concept of a roundabout, and the city said, well, we have some concerns, but we're interested in it, pursue it more, and kind of get back to us, so we did. We, we ultimately brought upon, or MINDOT actually is kind of footing the bill for a roundabout expert, but that's his career, he's a professional, and from the state of Minnesota, and actually teaches some of the MINDOT classes to the MINDOT staff about roundabouts. So MINDOT brought him in to help these along, because it was a difficult roundabout, the 34 roundabout is with the SKU there, it's, it's a tough roundabout, so figured we needed to bring him in to be that expert, and he ultimately, that's again, what he does in his career, and helped refine some of these items within the ICE report, and then something that we call the geometric layout, which is all the line work that reviewed, I think at the last council meeting or two council meetings ago. He worked on that and refined some of the truck turning movements, some of the EMS services and how we can tweak the mini roundabout at Main Street, so there's definitely been a lot of, a lot of work and energy and obviously cost that the city's well aware of to get us where we are, so that, to your point, yes, there was a local expert based out of the twin cities, that, that's what he does, is design round, roundabouts across the country in the state of Minnesota, so.
Yeah, and this ICE report was first presented to us in May of 2020, so the council moved forward this over a year ago. So a lot of the stuff that's been brought up in the last month, it, it's irrelevant. I mean, it would be not in the best interest of the taxpayers of Casson, the city of Casson, to change this project now, because when we first did this, we told the state, you want to change the project, you're picking up the bill. If we go back now and change it after the fact, who's going to get stuck with the bill? The citizens of Casson, after we've already talked about this for over a year and a half, it was presented at the Chamber of Commerce with big, whatever visual things, nobody complained. There was some public meetings at Daniels about some of the road construction, nobody complained. We've had it in multiple council packets, nobody's complained. I mean, it is what it is, every decision we make's not going to be popular, but the citizens of Casson will pay dearly if we go back on what we've already approved, so just to remind the council of that. It's not going to be a cheap endeavor, and it's not in our best interest, so.
And it could move the timeline, potentially.
Yeah, it could move the timeline to never, so, anyway, that's where we're at. So the public meeting is at the forum room next Thursday at 6:00, it's an informational meeting, the engineer and, will MINDOT be there or just?
Correct, yep.
MINDOT will be there, engineer will be there to provide the project details to everybody who's missed it over the last year and a half.
Are we, we're going to have that posted? Because I'm sure you're going to have?
I would post it in case there's a?
That was a question we were going to ask tonight, actually, that's a good point, Dan, if council members are knowing that they're going to be in attendance?
I will be there.
Forum, we're reposting that here at city hall, so folks know, we're not anticipating any action being taken at this meeting, it's not going to be a hearing or anything of that nature, it's just information, but do we have an idea?
I think everybody's going to, I'll post it as there'll be a forum. I would just say that there'll be at least three of us there, if not all five of us.
I got it. Okay, thank you, man.
She got it.
She got it.
Okay. Is that all you got then?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, there's one more thing, another J3 that was added, just to make, everybody's got that in their packet. We got a, a notification or a resolution that the city of Manorville passed informing us, or I guess you'd say asking us to design the project differently on Highway 57. I'll just respond by saying it's really nice of them to send the resolution, but unless they're going to help pay for it, they should probably worry about their own city. So we'll just make note that we did receive that. It's about traffic flow through the city of Casson affecting the citizens of Manorville. Again, the people that don't live in Casson, if you want to come help pay for it, we welcome your input. Other than that, we've got the decision made, and I'd probably worry about the flow of the sewer coming from Manorville first before traffic. So anything else, anybody?
I just wanted to, to point out that the document that was added, this J3 for folks that are watching at home, if they're curious, is a document from MINDOT regarding best practices, best practices for pedestrian and bicycle safety, and out of all of the emails that we've received, mostly from people who are not Casson residents, many of them did bring up, is this the best solution for the safety of pedestrians and bicycles? That is what this study addresses, so I would encourage people to pull up the packet on the city's webpage and read this, because it will address their concerns.
And that's a great point, I mean, that's the other reason we're having this informational meeting, is I know we posted a meeting on Facebook, and we had folks that questioned, had questions about it, and that's absolutely why we want folks to come and ask those questions